I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of America, and to the Constitution of our Constitution, under oath, and to the mission of this election.
The school board will convene in closed session tonight to consider financial, medical, or any personal histories of this plan of data on the specific persons which have confessed in public, if you let them have substantial effect on the reputation of any person referred to such histories or data, specifically to discuss a student in their manner, and then to determine whether they can turn the employment promotion conversation on the form of evaluation that ordering public employee over to the government providing that jurisdiction, or exercising responsibility to sort of mishaps, one not employee, five brand one currency, in particular, the superintendent, mid-year goals, high school math teacher, and middle school coaching position. Do we have any guests here? We don't have any guests here. That is all. I didn't get it, but.
That was just a report that he sent to the board for another.
Oh, okay. Are there any items anyone wishes to remove from the consent agenda? If none, has there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
A note, there are a number of policies there, and there's probably many wondering before if the school board didn't get those, was able to review them, and those are for name changes only. And we also are accepting the resignation of Kimberly White here as the high school math teacher, and Julie Salsbury and Mary Jackson as the L L A's. All of you say hi.
Aye.
Those motion carried. We'll move to administrative reports. Ms. Barbara.
I present.
Okay.
I was planning on.
Okay. Okay. We all have the guest intelligence reports, and we have questions to direct those to the superintendent, superintendent's report. I don't know. The only thing I have to report is I saw that, and this is not political in any way, but this is Sebastopol. Secretary of Education is making a tour of all 56 states, meeting with the governors, congressmen, senators, some, I don't know how many school districts she's visiting each state, but more than two school districts, and they're looking for best practices, you know, student achievement things, and I think Sebastopol is an excellent example of a model. You know, we have no idea where the whole take down the Department of Education is going. But if she's coming to Wisconsin and wants to see this, this is Sebastopol's place. So I made a contact with Tony White's office, Tony White is the congressman of the eighth district, to see if he has any sway, or has Pat around, but I think this superintendent is working on a letter asking.
It's a great opportunity for us to showcase, as Ms. Barry just talked about, our excellent instructional practices and our academic achievement. As I shared with you earlier this week, we are noted as one of the top high schools in the nation, and that's due to our staffing ratios, our academic performance, our rigor that sits inside of the high school. So it's a great opportunity for us to just give a shout out to our staff and to our community for the support that we have.
It's not political in any way. I see laughing, Mr. White.
Well, I'm wondering how long the Department of Education, it's due to be, whatever.
That's, you know what, that is all, like so many other things we hear lately today, that is all speculation right now, there's, you know, some say this, some say that, some say this, some say that. We don't know until we know. So in the meantime, we try to do its best for Sebasti, we try to do its best for Sebastopol. And if gathering, us showcase is great.
I'm gonna check somebody who's close to me.
Pardon?
I am. Somebody I'm gonna check to see who knows personally.
Great. Policy committee reports, we have a common business tonight, but I don't have anything else to talk about in that regard. Athletic committee, some events on the agenda, Jeff, do you want to comment?
Just, well, just discuss a little bit of the memorandum agreement that we have regarding the football fields, some items that, a lot of directors are gonna communicate with the first department, and then want to come forward after that, we're gonna mitigate any one, so discussing some of those things. And then other than that, it's something that's in the package.
I did, I did walk in the high school gym, show it as long as I could.
Uh huh.
It wasn't even that. Looks like it's gonna be.
There's a difference.
Yeah, I mean, it's real, just walking in there. It's rolling back.
It's flat. Did they tell Mary Roxanne that they can't give any high balls or valuable for the next one?
I'm sure.
I'm speaking with you.
Tell my kids.
It was something, lack of sound.
Anything on facilities?
Just a, just a quick summary, all of our summer projects are completed, as you've heard and I've mentioned, the rope is done, the parking lot V C L is done, the gym acoustics is done, and the H back prep for the installation of the two systems is done, and the building, all of the constructs are done, so we are ready for staff to come back in Monday, so excited for that.
Two H backs, so that project is.
Well, they still don't, our two systems are tucked together, but we have two systems in place, one for the ninety section and one for the high school section, and we'll set the one during a break when kids aren't here, because we don't want to disrupt the instruction, and then the other one will set, because it's all ready to go. Hopefully, as soon as we get it, it should be really well. And the good news about both of those systems is they set both sides of the building up for air conditioning, and will actually deliver air conditioning to the elementary gym, so for graduation, our concerts, we will have air conditioning on that side of the building.
Excellent. We'll move on to the new system, and we have deficiencies of the general evaluation bond.
So I will start by introducing that. So we discussed our options for deficiencies for this fall, and the fair to run a couple of options for us. In scenario one, and I will introduce Mike Clark as well from Fair, he is joining us to meet today.
Hello.
Hey, Mike, Mike, I'm gonna bring up my, um, or do you want to bring up on your screen, so you have some control over at the.
No, you, you can.
Okay. So I will bring up the preliminary summary, we had two options run. Under scenario one, in either option, we're looking at about $2.4 million for deficiencies. We would reduce the outstanding principal of our debt. In the first scenario, we would put a set on bonds maturing between 2030 and 2035. So the purpose is to reduce the overall debt payments in the next years of the referendum so that the district can shift that tax burden from debt service to operating means and not onto the taxpayer, not increase our tax levy. The district saves about $600,000 under that scenario in interest savings. Under scenario two, that was a higher interest savings. That would place the payoff of the longest term debt that's outstanding. We would save approximately $148,000. So there's a difference of about $150,000, but as we discussed the options and talked about where we're at as a district, and uncertainties or uncertainties with funding and levies and education, we really felt that scenario one gives the district the most flexibility with $600,000 in savings, which is really still pretty good. So I will let Mike discuss a little bit more about this option. So I'm gonna go back to the first option, and what should be kind of place that debt payment across multiple years.
Okay, so yeah, this is, this is the option, just given where the district's at in its growing reliance on operating referendum, I think the, this option definitely puts you in a little bit better position to absorb the potential higher operating question in the future. Not saying you will, but it does give you that additional flexibility. And as mentioned, it kind of is a levy offset, so if you have a drop in one area, well, you might have a potential increase in another area. You know, it does reduce the overall savings, but I did want to remind the board that from the two previous deficiencies that we've done, the district has saved just under 200, excuse me, $2.7 million of interest. So you've already, you know, generated significant savings for the taxpayer, you've shortened the debt term, and, you know, this option doesn't necessarily shorten the term, it's more structure orientated to accommodate potential referendums in the future, which, given everything we've seen, is just gonna be a fact of life for the district for the coming years, so we wanted to generate a couple options, but also wanted to show what the maximum savings is, and I don't want to bet my $250,000, but the fact that the district is still generating almost $600,000 savings on top of the almost $2.7 million savings you've already generated through prior deficiencies, you know, I think it's a fair trade off, so. And again, just to remind everyone about deficiencies, these dollars go into an escrow account, they are interested there, you're limited to government securities, you're earning a decent, a good, decent return in that escrow, and that interest, we factored in estimated interest earnings at this point, because we can't lock the escrow until, you know, closer to your board actions will take place next month. And then the, at the time the payments are due, the bond maturities, the principal payments and associated interest to those maturities would be paid by the escrow account when those payments were due. You see, on the fourth column from the right, you see hypothetical reduction of Fund 39 debt service, you'll see an estimated amount on option one at 89,750. That's a reduced interest payment, because the escrow is making those interest payments, so become off your levy. This is also, as I've mentioned before, this is also a positive for your credit rating, which again is a secondary concern, but it is, it is a positive. And again, the, the costs associated with it are down in the lower left hand corner, similar to what they've been in the past, so it's a same process, just a different consideration this time around, given the increase you've had in the operating question this time, and the potential increase that may or may not occur in the future, and just trying to accommodate that. The district was holding its operating question flat, we were going for max savings, we were about necessary an increase there, but given the state budget, which wasn't as, you know, wasn't quite what a lot of people were hoping for in terms of spendable dollars, this special ed dollars were nice for some districts, but that'll vary, you do get the 325, that is, you know, when you do the math, it's a relatively small percentage on a per pupil basis, so we just don't, we just think that the need to put yourself in a position to maintain your operating question is really important, so with that, I'll turn it back to Tasha, or take any questions.
So I guess what we're looking for from the board tonight is to weigh these two options, and give us what, which scenario would you like us to move forward with, that we can present in September, the documents for approval.
Are you just kind of looking for a straw poll, or do you need an action?
Just a straw poll with all the board reports, we can feel for where the board is directing. Does the board really want to go to scenario one, which sets us up for the potential to have to go out for a non-recurring operating referendum in 2028, a little bit better, because it reduces our payments, or do we capitalize on the greatest reduction of the interest, and that would be putting it on the end? As Mike said and Tasha said, with the state of educational funding in the state of Wisconsin, I think it's in our best interest to position ourselves to have the least impact on our taxpayers if we have to go back out in 2028.
Yep. Option one.
Anybody else have a preference?
I go back to one, just because I'm, we still, still with say.
Yeah, I think it seems like, it seems like that's what our financial advisors are recommending, and our superintendent is standing here, so. So do you have any more to add?
Okay. They all want. Mike, I would like to thank you, and we will be moving forward with option one.
That, that, that sounds great, we'll, we'll coordinate with Quarles and Brady on their end, and just as a reminder, these were preliminary numbers, we won't have the actual investment portfolio, so your savings may vary a bit, depending on the actual interest rates we lock in when we get closer to the meeting in September, so.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, have a great night.
Good night.
Good night.
Can I just sort of update soon?
Yes. Then we alluded to this, there is a presentation on February 16th at the Crest Pavilion, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., entitled Funding Our Future: How Your Tax Values Fund Door County Public Schools. And there are going to be three presenters, Brett Stowson, Superintendent DeJavolt, Dan Schergel, Officer Bay, and Ann Chapman from Wasbode, Wisconsin Association of Business Officials. She is fantastic. Nobody explains fuel funding better than Ann Chapman. I've heard her several times, and I've worked with her, and she really has her hat together, so if you're interested, September 16th is a Monday night, 6:30 to 8:00 at the Crest.
In that regard, could you see if they could have that recorded?
I can check with Ann.
Recording, so that, you know, Lev and Chapman can put it out on the Sebastopol channel, maybe put the recording on the school websites.
I'll check.
My understanding is that it's going to be recorded.
Secondly, the board legislative session before period will begin on September 2nd, and it's scheduled from the 2nd to the 11th, and the W A S B legislative people are feeling there will be concernable attention to educational issues, improving staffing shortages, rehiring militants, referenda restrictions, private and charter school funding, like the decoupling effort is out there right now, as well as policy and curricular mandates, so work on that. And then I did see something yesterday or today that says, Wisconsin school report cards are getting an update, Jerry, I thought that would be interesting, but major changes will require new state law. Wisconsin educators are working to update the state school report card system for the first time since it was released in 2012. But parents and caregivers shouldn't expect drastic changes, they're working on the council. Most I can find right now. That is it.
Okay. So then you wanted to present a leadership symposium that you attended on Strategic Planning with the Wisconsin Association of Schools, and we had some information in our app.
That was the next one session, and one that I particularly wanted to highlight, in addition to some references that I made in my report, is the strategic planning session, and it was done by Patty Venkman, who we all know, and Cheryl Stinste, who we all know, and the superintendent from Manawatt School District. And they talked about honoring the past, celebrating the present, and embracing the future, which I thought summarized very nicely. They talked about the process needing to reflect the community, what does the community want? I am thinking that we may want to, when we get to the point of bringing in an outside consultant, we may want to look at getting a proposal from W A S B, which is Patty and Cheryl we're working with, Glenn Sisa, and Drew Howard is a facilitator, a private company that we've worked with at W A S B, did a great job. They feel now that a plan should only be for three years, because things are changing so rapidly, no more five year plans or ten year plans. And they talked about surveying the community and the staff for the five greatest challenges we face, the five most important skills and abilities for our students, the five financial priorities, and five ways to evaluate our success. And then they talked about the goals, how the district goals go down to the department goals, down to the school goal, down to the classroom goals. And they talked about board members serving as a role model for monitoring that problem, so it doesn't just sit on the shelf. Using the Y R B S, Rosa, has some of the data, and I sent out a copy of the different kinds of data that are recommended, data that can be measured, and I'm already there working on that, getting all of this data put together, and the staff is working with that, and then developing a calendar to monitor all of the data. And W A S B has a leading tool, evaluation tool, that can be used for that purpose. And they also talked about superintendent evaluation being based on the data and evidence, not by board member feelings or opinions, so really a lot of emphasis on data. And there were other good sessions too, that I referenced in my report, but the strategic plan has obvious particular interest, because that's the framework that I know as a district, so lots of good stuff, and then our updates from that, we got lots of good information, we will get you this day, so lots of resources there.
I think the one thing that came to me was the top stresses that students.
Oh, yes.
See that during.
Yes.
It's supposed to.
That was a very good.
Academic pressure, right?
Session.
That does get it. Right. It's pretty competitive. It's not the only one.
Did you like the comment?
I know, I was just trying to listen.
Pardon?
I was just trying to listen to your comment.
Oh, I just sent you on the, the top stresses that students are subject to, and the number one was academic pressures, you know, I thought maybe social media would be a higher question. What would it solve?
When is the last time we did the Y R B S?
This last year. Just took it, the past last year.
Spring or fall?
Spring.
Spring, so we should be getting those results.
Sure.
Yeah, that would be great.
And it was the first time that we've done it in years.
I know, so.
We did, we should make those results.
Absolutely. And I think looking forward here, because we're student honor board, because then we can get some feedback from the kids, and there was an excellent article in the school rules on students at the center and student engagement and student.
So Lucy, you had a DM, and Jeff Walker, you know this, but, and people can like where this comment comes from or not, but there's kind of action around the country now, where there are some schools that are standing, calling upon the school, at the school, they have all gone. And there's a statistic that in about 2011, 12, when students, sorry to get my voice, that's when the student mental health problems started to escalate, because they're not talking to each other, they're on their, they're on their screens, they're talking with Snapchat, or whatever they're using now.
I absolutely agree with that. But I think this conversation segues nicely with the presentation. And so I appreciate the comments, and I think that's why I was leaning in, because I wanted to catch what you were saying too.
It was a description of radio, sorry.
Is this related to?
Yeah, very topic. Something like that.
This is brown?
Yes.
Presentation, yeah.
This is all aligned to that.
Yeah.
Thirty-one states have laws now paying cell phones.
Thirty-one states.
And, and case on really firing, and what his comment was, is that taking cell phones out of the school, teachers are now fighting, the kids are not getting noticed.
I, I had heard that too.
They're taking notice, they're paying attention.
Well, not something for us to tackle this year, but the future.
We actually don't allow cell phones, but we don't have our high school, middle school, high school, and elementary, we don't allow them.
If all staff, for the only, you know, help to that, and have to put that.
That's the hardest part of policy. Yeah. Well, thank you for your attention tonight, this ties in nicely with the conversation that Joe had, that I heard about some strategic planning, some of the stress that students are dealing with today. So I'm here to present, I have some notes, and I have time limit on myself here, to present Sebastopol's equitable, multi-level system of supports, okay? That ties into social and emotional learning, which is some of the topics that you just brought up right now. How are kids dealing with academic pressures? How are they dealing with social pressures? And how is that, how is it affecting their mental health? And how is that affecting then their, their ability to learn, and be present, and be engaged every day? So Sebastopol has developed this past year, we really organized our systems and levels of support, so we wanted to, or I wanted to share the team's work that we did this year, but a bit of history about the social, emotional, you know, group here at Sebastopol. We've been doing some of this work probably for, you know, definitely when we came back from COVID, really came back, talking, thinking about the kids, thinking about what the kids need, and also thinking about the staff, what are the staff going to need to come back into the building? So from that time on, a core group here at Sebastopol has led the passion to continue to make sure that social and emotional development is continuing to happen for, for the students and the staff here at Sebastopol. So tonight, I want to share a brief history of that, I want to share the progress that we made this last school year, and then present where we're going in the future, okay? Social emotional learning, like I just said, is deeply connected into E M L S S, we use acronyms all the time in, in education, it's easier for me to use that, so E M L S S is the new acronym that is aligned to social emotional learning, and they continue, and the skills that kids should be developing, becoming comfortable and willing themselves. Fortunate to have that, a team of counselors, related service personnel, dedicated teachers who have continued to pioneer some of this work. I definitely want to thank Melissa Melkor, Polly Redsaw, Kelly Horr, Rankin, Steve Umetam, and Stephen Warner for all of their work that they did this year, so I really do need to acknowledge them. Together, this group organized, strengthened our tier one, tier two, and. Together, this group organized, strengthened our tier one, tier two, and tier three levels of support for students. And we organized them. So tonight's presentation is a direct reflection of our work together this year. Staff, this work has paved the way towards greater transparency, professional development for staff, and staff empowerment to better meet needs for our students. So I have a couple slides to share with you right now, but before I do that, also grateful for CISA seven support. Marcy Hoon Waldron has supported us this past year through Project Aware. She's been instrumental in this work and is helping to guide that work, so just want to thank her for, for all the work that she has helped this team with. So you're going to see here that I mentioned that there were three tiers. We have our universal level of support. That universal support, what that is, that means every student gets this every day, okay? It's part of the instruction, it's part of the curriculum. Level two is more targeted interventions for students to show that maybe they need some more support in some areas. And then tier three is, is our intensive support. So there are the three levels that we do, and I'm about to show you what we do in those levels, right? So level one, and also I'd like to add, this is broken down into elementary and then secondary, okay? So I'm not going to repeat four, secondary, because a lot of it is similar, but I just want you to see it. And this is a very orange version of this. So our tier one level of supports, we have school counselors that go into classes, that's weekly, that's led by our counselors. We have school-wide expectations, and that's respectful, responsible, ready, safe to create, you know, to have, you know, in a safe learning environment. We do PBIS, positive-based intervention systems in the elementary school. And then in secondary school, we've got pride, you know, so our pride motto that we use. So we have school-wide expectations. Universal in the elementary school is zones of regulation, okay? So that's a system where teachers are talking to kids about what zone are you in? Are you ready to learn? And if you're not in the ready-to-learn zone, what are going to be some of the strategies that you need that are taught to those students so they can get in the green zone? That's the good zone, right? That means they're ready to learn. We have the Character Strong program, which we've talked a lot about over the past year, but that's implemented in both the elementary school, the middle, and the, the high school. We are going on year three of Character Strong implementation. And then all of our co-curricular activities that we have here at Sebastopol. We offer so many co-curricular activities here. We give kids every chance to get involved in something other than coming and just going to that class, right? We want them to feel like Sebastopol is their school, and it's a sense of community. So we're always trying to increase the level of curricular activities that we have our kids, so our kids can be involved in even more. So that's our tier one supports. That's going to be very similar in the middle and the high school as well. Tier two supports, some of these are going to be new, and we're really, really excited about them, okay? I'll start out, over here, we do small groups. We do small groups with the counselors. So Melissa Mountmore and Holly Retschlo have small groups that they pull in. They use tier two for Character Strong for some of those, for some of those groups. And that's a lot of variety of topics, right? We talk about the academic pressures that some of our students feel. We have a group to get, you know, we talk about that, you know, in small groups. It's more intimate, it's more targeted, and the kids have shown that they're the ones, through behavioral intervent, I mean behavioral data that we see, they're the ones that really, really benefit from that. And then teachers are also very vocal about, well, maybe the student could benefit from a tier two. So we have those that are available. We have student support teams, too, that are used pretty regularly. Here's, we've heard about students, this is tier two. The adults get together, we talk about what's going on, and we come up with some solutions. And we come up with timelines, because if the solution that we come up with, and it's something that we want to try, if it's effective, that's wonderful. But if it's not effective, that group has to come back together and try and find something that's going to work for the student. So that would be considered a tier two, okay? Two up here, the two-by-ten and the check and connect, they are new this year that we're so excited to implement. They are research-based interventions for teachers and students to, for better connections. So students feel that sense of belonging. Check and connect, too, I mean, they're both very, very similar. One is, the check and connect is one where it's one mentor to one student, and it's over a long period of time. This two-by-ten here is meant to be a quick intervention where it's targeted for that student and any, and the adult that the student has recommended the adult wants to, to make that connection. So there are two-minute individual connections for many consecutive students. And the other one is daily checking to the mentoring system. So staff is going to be trained on that this year, so that's one piece that we're going to roll out. We're really excited, and this group that I mentioned before really went through, what are some interventions that we don't see in our tiers already that we can increase staff's capacity to make greater connections?
Do you see a lot of students putting up walls?
Yes.
Against that?
Against the
What I mean, what you're talking about is maybe, maybe a very simple statement. Students put up a wall.
I think it, yep.
A little like
I think it has to do with everything to do with the relationship that is established, right? The trust that's established, right? So yeah, there are some students that don't want, you know, that, that are not ready for that yet. We find other ways to navigate that. So if you're going to put, we can't make them. You're exactly right, we can't make them. But we're at least identifying at that point, if it's that student, maybe it's me, right? So maybe if it's another person, maybe it's Mr. Corbett that needs to try and connect with that student, too. So just if the walls are up, we accept personally if that wall is up, but that doesn't mean we can't stop, right? We find somebody else, we find another way in. But that's part of how you make that connection, that's part of why these things are so important. And if it was a student that was putting up the walls and wasn't responding to this, maybe it's not strong enough, we need to look at another tier of support that they might need to where it's more comfortable for them. So, and we have our last tier, which is, these four here, right? So if a student has been out for a suspension, a mental health challenge, we always have a re-entry care plan for them. So we're discussing it, students involved, the guardians are involved, a trusted person for that, for that student teacher is also involved. We have behavior plans, right? We don't always use behavior plans in the general education, that usually just lives in, you know, the special education silo. But we have behavioral plans for all students, you know, and implementing that a little, you know, more, then more people are aware of the challenges that the student has, and how are the best ways to not have that student put the walls up if they're trying to interact with them, to get them into the green zone and the ready-to-learn zone, and happy to be at school. Maybe not happy all the time, willing to be here, willing to do the work, willing to push themselves. Individual counseling, and that happens definitely with our, with our school counselors as well, and then sometimes with a lot of our, our, our counseling, but that trusted conversation and safe place for some of our teachers. And then the last one, and this is our highest level, we talked about this drive program many, many times here. I think we're going into our ninth year of this drive program. And just as a reminder, that's when a counselor from Valen comes in, they come in, she comes in, and they think about the rules of Tuesdays and Fridays, and she meets with her students one-on-one, and they have the highest meeting. So that's our, our tiers that are here. So I'll quickly, I'll pause here for a question, if there is questions, if there are. Is that, Kim, you have more? Well, I'm going to just show a couple of things here, but it's very similar. I just wanted you to show, show it, and I won't talk like I did before, I feel like I haven't explained them. But you'll see here that the secondary tier one supports are, are very, they're very, they're almost the same. We've added in here quarterly incentives, right, for our middle and our high school for a tier one, and also some of the health classes, right? Because we're talking about some of those topics, the health class, we're talking about mental health, we're talking about how you deal with anxiety, we're talking about how you deal with stress, right? So a lot of those conversations are happening in the curriculum as well, and not just through Character Strong, or, you know, communication and conversations with the adults in the building. The co-curriculars are there, like I said, before the school-wide norms, that's pride, and Character Strong is weekly in the middle and the high school, so that's a weekly, targeted lesson in social, emotional development at all of our kids' gaps. And then you'll see here that our secondary supports are exactly the same. And you'll see here that there's other few things that are a little bit different on the secondary level. Secondary level, we do sort of conferencing a lot, right? So instead of a consequence, let's talk about what happened, right? You know, it's collaborative, it's aimed at resolving the conflict and promoting positive student behavior, right? So students don't feel like they're in trouble, right? They feel like they've talked through the problem, and now people understand a little bit more, and it's more empowering than community pressure. Individual behavior plan, we talked about that, counseling again, the check and connect, re-entry supports, and then also here, tier three, too, we partner with community agency partnerships within the county, and oftentimes, those supports come in the school to help students. That could be individual counseling, that could be heart care, you know, so counselors also come in. Sebastopol opens that up and says, absolutely, that can come in because the student's, you know, emotional well-being, you know, needs to be in a good place to maximize their well-being. So we're very open to other outside providers coming in. And of course, we try to minimize, you know, the impact of their education, you know, if they're in a tier free intervention, sure, come in the school and make that happen as Goals for the 2025, 26 school year, you know, I wanted to add in here, this system that I have just shown you is all going to be a part of Sebastopol's school-wide goals this year, right? So I'm bringing this to your attention because I can't wait in future meetings to tell you, well, here's where our goals are, what are we focusing on. This is definitely going to be one of them. So we're going to use this system to focus on a school-wide goal. That school-wide goal, I mean, not kicking around, but thinking about different ideas. Do you want to improve attendance, for instance, right? Would this system help with student attendance for some of our students who are chronically absent and driven? Would this help? Or are we going to look at specific behavioral data and say, well, we're seeing that most kids are getting referrals because of classroom disruption? Are we going to set a goal that we're going to reduce classroom, you know, disruptions? So using data and numbers and this system here that I've just presented, we can come up with a goal that's actionable, that's backed by data, that we can put supports in place and see whether or not it's working or not. We're so excited about this. Because of the team's dedication and vision and hard work this past school year, I'm really, really pleased that we, that, that our work is taken notice, right? People are wondering about what we're doing. This coming year, superintendent principals are going to be on our committee as well to really look at quarterly behavioral data, so everybody is understanding where is the blind end at Sebastopol, and where do we need to focus on as well. So during Teacher In-Service Week, I'm going to present this to the teachers who's going to believe in full transparency, the staff should know where's the road at, where are we going, and this is something that we're really excited to do. During that meeting as well, I'm also going to ask for more people who have a passion for this, please come join us, because it's been about five or six of us, and I want to really fill with, with teachers who have ideas or energetic about some of the, you know, the struggles that our kids are going through emotionally, or behaviorally, and how to help with that. And then finally, just wanted to add in here, in September, for our first professional development day with, for teachers, this is going to be the topic. We're going to look at the behavioral data, we're going to show the behavioral data, we're going to get feedback on what our school-wide goals should be, because our teachers need to have been looking at. So September, First In-Service Day is going to be really exciting for us to more demonstrate and showcase some of the things that we've done, also bringing in NEX PATH, which is that new data warehouse system, to be able to showcase how that all worked together. This work is essential for student success. Really, really proud to be a part of it, and I'm so excited this is where this is going to be next year. So thank you for your time, and I'll be back.
How much do you think is for reading work, suspension, suspension policy, can, can change that?
It should be. Yeah, yeah. So through a tiered system, if students were, I clarified a little bit earlier, right? And we don't get the suspensions, because we've got other minor behaviors to where you're saying a kid, a student shouldn't be in school, right? They need to be here. And evidence, you know, the, the research shows that suspensions, they're not effective in changing behavior.
This, that, this, that was excellent. This is excellent.
There are goals up there.
I think that, I think that, I can bring the staff and ask them, what should our school-wide goal be? And it's empowering to them, instead of people up here saying, this is what our goal, this is what our goal should be, you do it.
They, and the teams themselves, they find the data to help craft of your opportunities. And once people see that, they can't argue with data, because a lot of this can be emotionally based. No, our kids are fine, no, they don't need this, no, let's look at some numbers, right? So finally here, goals for everyone to understand what I just presented to you, for our teachers to understand the tiers, to know how kids move in and out of the tiers, and to get help for kids when they need this. Increase our staff's capacity in that two-by-ten strategy and the check and connect, I said they were two new strategies. The creation of a behavioral data tracking system that staff can access themselves. And then again, quarterly need to analyze behavioral data, for levels of support for students. Big task, we can do it, and I would thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to presenting more to you.
Thank you very much. There's such a focus on mental health with the secretary visits, she should care about this.
What, what, can I also, where is health and nutrition like doing?
Well, they talk about, you know, emotional responses to things, and I don't have that health, they don't have that health, you know, curriculum that's in front of, like, you know, all of your body systems, right? How are you emotionally regulated? How are you physically regulated? How does your lack of sleep or your on-time exposure to screens or your nutrition, how is that affecting mental health? You know, so I bring it in that way.
That's not really going into, the role of nutrition.
Yeah.
Mental health is, it's, it's home?
Yeah.
I mean, but are we doing, do we do anything about it? Or, I mean.
No, it's a whole, it's, in health class, they, I know, it's in health class, they focus, the health class focuses a lot on nutrition.
But what do we do when we see students that are morbidly obese? We know what the result is going to be, it interferes with their, we, we counsel with the parents, we, and a kid comes to school, I mean, they eating his scorsese bar and his, you know, bag of potato chips and all those, I mean, it's such, it just came out in the summer, on that whole role. And somewhere, we have to be active players in that. And, and does this take it about a whole new world? Because in a class of a twelve-year-old, you can't say anything, you see some kid morbidly obese, we can't say anything about that, because we don't want to quote, hurt their feelings. But by not quote, hurting their feelings, you are, you are assigning them to a horrible puzzle, very difficult life unless you interfere. Someone intervened with the family and the parents to make them where this is going to end up in catastrophe, or you're going to, I mean, you just have to walk up through that. You just walk through Walmart, Walmart's a great example, walk through about, and this is, no one, there's not discussions in, in Washington that, I don't know, some people won't come here to that, but we've got to do something about that. And, and as schools look upon that they play a role in that, or do we say that's a personal issue at home?
No, man, you're focused on, you know, the, the wellness of the whole child, you know, and I think I would go back to the best place that I would, would answer that is, you know, the, the relationships that you have with kids, telling them that you care about them, you know? You know, it, you, I, I mean, I know, I would feel comfortable saying, hey, you know, how active are you? Or what's going on here? Not everybody's going to feel that way.
Why do you eat Cheetos, a bag of Cheetos every day? You know, that's going to hurt you.
Yeah.
Do, do we do that? Or we just say, that's, that's their decision? Or we just say, that's, that's their decision?
I don't think that schools, Sebastopol, has a line on interfering with that. I know we talk to the students, we have parent teacher conferences.
But if that happens, it wasn't education, it was education.
I think they, I think arts to water. They can, they can teach this in the health classes, they talk about nutrition, they talk about mental health, but if the students aren't ready to hear it.
Oh, probably tell the parents.
Personally, I think sixth grade is too young for the health class that they get. I think, I think those conversations about lifelong health would be better served at the junior year. They get from sixth grade to ninth grade. The hidden work of schools, that's another hidden, this is hidden work.
See, I guess, I'm really shocked, now that the beds are changing, that we couldn't serve full melting school. Well, now, the science says, you should have full melting. The crap we've been serving kids is the wrong stuff to be serving them, you know? Are we allowing them to substitute chocolate with melting? Well, then we're just adding to the problem. We're part of the problem, right? That's the wrong reason. Look, there's not an answer, but are we aware of that? And we can't think of any. So, okay, I'm just saying that are we adding it for their health? In what way? I mean, are we just aware of it and then, but that's, we don't want to hear it, so I call it cheating, that he's, because obviously, the physique of the child for the last ten years, fifteen years has changed. Twenty years has changed traumatic, and it seems we could just sit by and wait.
I, I, I agree with all that, but I think this is right. The school doesn't have a place in that, those familial decisions and choices. We can, we can monitor what they're eating in the lunchroom, we can try to teach them in health classes, and staff can model, instead of having tweens at their grave, they can have apples, but if the family isn't reinforcing it, the school can do anything about it.
All right, I think it's all right.
That was really good, what was up? Thank you. We have the suppression and restraint report.
That's me as well, I don't have... Sorry, didn't have a copy of it. But it's in your packet. So every August, we have to report Sebastopol's suppression and restraints. I'm happy to say, there's a marked reduction from last year, okay? So there's one student on there, a student that's, this is a special education student, and I, so you do have it in front of you, the numbers?
Yes, one for suppression and four for restraint.
That's what I thought. I just want to note, too, that that did not, those suppositions and restraints did not happen at Sebastopol, they happened at an alternative setting where the, where, you know, so it was in another alternate educational place.
And it was all student A.
It was all student A. So that's what was submitted to DPI as well, and then I'm finalizing another report to DPI tomorrow. So we are in a privileged shape with those proposals.
Is there a motion to accept the suppression restraint?
I made a motion to approve the restraint report.
Question to discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Period. Do we have the district liability insurance proposal?
It's a pleasure to be able to present the proposal. This year was only a 3.7% increase. If you remember, last year, we were in the double digits, pushing 30% increase in our costs. So that's a great place for us to be. I did want to point out, as I mentioned in my board packet memo to you, that every carrier is really adding a 1% deductible on wind and hail. We, our broker went out, tried to find another company, and they could see in the board packet, nobody would take us on, and the reason people won't take us on is because we're that class 10 because of fire protection. So we do have to have a 1% deductible on wind and hail. That 1% is to the tune of almost $500,000 if something would happen. So therefore, they put in the packet the option for us to buy down that deductible. If the option is either you can buy down, the deductible cost is $10,000 and the deductible would be $17,000 from that 500, I think that's 489 number, and then, or the cost is $50,000 and buy down the deductible to $8,100. Tasha and I have talked about this. Don't really see the need with where we are as a district to have that cost to buy down that deductible. If catastrophically, we would end up with that type of piece, we would have the ability to cover that deductible, so our thought was not to buy down. Yes? Okay?
I don't think we're going to the middle portion, but, sorry.
That's okay.
I was really surprised at some of the colleagues. This athletic sport is going to happen here. I don't know. Really? Yep. Okay. I wish I, it's expensive.
So I guess I leave it to the board, I'm seeking board advice on whether or not you want us to buy, buy down that deductible or keep it as its...
You didn't think it was necessary for us to buy down?
I guess I changed my opinion. Well, when we talked about, we were waiting the options. Obviously, the one in which you're looking at a $10,000 deductible for $17,000, that doesn't seem reasonable at all, right? I mean, you would have to have an event every couple of years, a catastrophic event every couple of years to make that worth it. I believe when we talked about the $8,100 for $50,000, you're talking about one event every 20 years. That, that would be worth it. I don't know how often we have a catastrophic wind and hail event. And if we have a catastrophic wind and hail event, you know, maybe $500,000 is not going to be, it's going to be a drop in the bucket, you know? I mean, if we have to, tornado takes out the entire school, it's going to cost a lot to replace it. So $8,100 is quite a bit of money.
If we have a catastrophic, so ask me about that, in federal agency school, we might call that special funding. Pregnant management, insurance laws, to get the money right away and post something over, or back in here or something.
So if we're going to go that route, is there an option you want or a reinstated?
So either to buy down, would be the option of buying down the $8,100 or the option to buy down, I'm sorry, yeah, at the cost of $8,100 or the cost of $17,400.
Or stay with the 1%. I mean, that's the same with residential, you know, almost all residential, 1%.
That's what he said, is it's just end of the national, gone across the board.
Yep.
For the discussion, is there a way to motion one way or the other?
I agree with you, 1%. Are we going to give it 1%?
For a second, I'm saying 1% deductible motion.
Two seconds.
Okay, there's a motion in the second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Then the 25-26 coaches handbook comes forward from the athletic committee, I guess, recommendation to approve.
Yep, and then the coaching student for the high school assistant golf coach was missing in the 24-25 employee handbook, and subsequently amended on page 48 of the handbook approved at the July board meeting. So it will be added at a rate of $1,960 per year and will revise handbook published on the school website.
Is there a motion of the coaches, 25-26 coaches handbook?
Move the acceptance of 25-26 coaches handbook.
Question to discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Then we have the activity funding procedure manual. Do you have any comments on that?
As you saw in your packet, majority of that was cleaning up format to bring it forward in terms of clarity to venue electronic procedures.
I like motion for the activity funding procedure manual, question answered.
Second, question to discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. So this next session, our first and second reading of technical corrections to policies.
I would move to approve the technical connection correction of the policies as listed under one, A through Q.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Then we have the first reading of our policies.
As you can see, the policy committee has been visiting.
You know, I have a, I have a concern with so many first readings of policies coming forward in such a large group. And it kind of takes to read through them, and I don't want to get caught in the public looking at this and saying, well, look at your, you're approving 33 policies at one time or even taking a look at them, because that has happened in the past.
We haven't heard of you, a lot of our additional member additions.
We have a committee, we have Niola doing a lot of work, we have a committee that needs to kind of do the work. I, we all should be reading them, and some stuff is not in the discussion, so.
This is a comment from me.
No, I'm just saying, I, I suppose, I get what you're saying, because there's a lot of reading.
So typically, there's two updates a year that come out from Niola. The updates are the new statutory changes or legal changes that have happened, and they bring it in a batch. We could split the batch out and go through the process over multiple meetings rather than trying to do it all in one. But now, once we update these policies, we may have a singleton here or there, depending upon the work we're doing within the district, but we really shouldn't have another update until spring since this lengthy. Last year, we had, had a couple of pieces, since we had some significant changes in policy, but overall, as it was mentioned, most of these are minor tweaks based off of legal recommendation to create some consistency. And when they're more time intensive, significant changes, I think that's an opportunity that the policy committee can call out to have the conversation at the board or separate those policies out. So my recommendation would be to keep them together, understand that it is the volume of policies that you had to look at. Hopefully, with the electronic format that you have that shows the differences in the red and the green, it's a much easier read than if it's just a black and white copy.
For the purpose of anyone viewing, this is a lot of policies that the school board had, the committee had these, the school board has had, has had the opportunity to read them and make comments, which Elizabeth Geider picked up one on the nurse, their policy changed from having an RN to an LPM. Superintendent had that explanation that our contract now that the medical center allows for an LPM, not an RN.
I would just say, I think all of these have been legally granted by attorneys from Niola, and they're pretty consistent with other school districts, different state of Wisconsin, and serving as a policy committee, most of the changes, we don't have control when there is an option, we're discussing the policy committee and then bring that option forward. And in some cases, we have to go back to the two principals, we have the area in for it, or in the case of the nurse, go on to the nurse that works with our district, or the food service people, there's a policy there. So it isn't just that you're moving these forward without really spending a lot of time.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, that motion is carried.
Who made that motion? I didn't catch who made it.
Who made the motion to approve that policies?
That was for the technical corrections, and now, this was just for the first read, recommending for second reading.
Yeah, we don't think anybody made a motion.
I made a motion to approve the first reading. No, you don't make a motion. The first reading is for the questions.
He did move on the technical corrections.
Correct.
So we're looking at a motion on the first read of A through 10.
I would make a motion to approve the first read of that.
Third second.
I always thought the first read was, the first time you ever read it, you read it in the discussion, and as the questions here, they come back at the second read is when you, when you approve them finally, because you don't approve the question.
Okay, I'm sorry, we don't need action.
The first read.
All right, I, my apologies. That includes our regular business. Is there a motion?
We need a policy, we're approving a policy.
Is there a motion to convene during the fifth session?
Some who?
Second.
Rule call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
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 Motion carried at 7:09, second open session. We'll first look for a motion on the high school math teacher. Ross?
Move to approve the hiring of Ross Kennedy as our high school math teacher.
Second, question to discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. And then we will have a motion on the middle school football head coach, co-head coach. Ralph?
I made a motion to approve Ralph Kennedy as a middle school head coach.
Second.
Questions and discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Our next meeting is September 17.
Do we have to approve, we have to, and we have to approve a custom plan that Melissa Marthra presented last year.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So I make a motion that we approve Melissa Marthra's...
I think he has, he has, he has specific wording for that that we need to use. Do you want to read it for Jerry?
I think a motion to approve modified credit requirements, meaning state standards of 15 and a half credits for potential 2026 graduate, graduate from Sebastopol High School with anticipated graduation date in spring of 2026.
Second.
Questions and discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Our next meeting is September 17. Wear your red or black shirt, we'll send a reminder out. Communication meeting is 28, does anybody would like to participate in that? Monday is the first day of teacher in-service, and that's the lunch date. Tuesday's lunch, Tuesday 26, if anybody wants to come, you can bring 11:30 or something to help serve. If there's no other business, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried at 8:02 PM.
Opposed, motion carried at 8:02 PM.